So, these are important for adopt the records.
Yes, sir.
Making sure that the records are.
Okay.
There's a question about the minutes, I guess?
He was discussing about, uh, why was his name taken off of the account?
So, uh, the, the minutes actually reflect the motions made?
He explained it. Beautiful one.
No, no, this is motion to adopt the minutes. That's where we have to record the minutes of the business.
Oh, move.
Been moved by Councilman Kenny to adopt one of both of the minutes.
Oh, man.
November, it can move by Councilman Kenny to adopt November the third and November the fifth, uh, City Council, uh, minutes. Second. So, um, without having understanding that that for, uh, without a second, uh, may I request an executive session so Attorney Sanders go get some clarity on the porters of adopting the minutes? As your amendment, uh, to the.
While we should go into executive session, I can't explain it yet. We ain't talking about nothing first, you know?
So is to give an understanding with the council.
You can explain it right here in front of everybody, but I think everybody doesn't want to understand.
Do you do, Counselor, I mean, uh, Attorney Sanders, uh, would you like to discuss the?
No, I, I don't know about discussing. I'll, I'll explain. Minutes. Uh, uh, actions taken by, uh, not only the City Council, but county commission and whatever. Minutes are not about, uh, various discussions and other kinds of thing. The law only require that you record that actions that were taken. So that means somebody made a motion and somebody seconded it and then it was voted on and either it succeeded, uh, in passing or it failed to pass. And there are some people who think that everything goes in the minute. There's no requirement for that. In fact, uh, if you study parliamentary procedures, let's say you record the actions taken by, uh, not only governmental bodies, but all kind of organizations. Now, certainly there are some people who try to record everything because they may not understand better, but, uh, that's just not required. Right there.
And I will add that if you have something in the minutes that you would like for the minutes to reflect, most leaders say that, uh, Mayor, I would like for the minutes to reflect and then remake their motion and say whatever you're saying. So if you say that you want the minutes to reflect a certain thing, then you have to put them in your motion and say specifically you want that stated and clearly in the minutes.
So, John, if the minutes are, the business action taken at the council, I know Mr. Buss said something about one of the votes.
No.
On page thirty-five, too.
We've been saying that for years.
Another thing, uh, it says that Presiding, uh, announced that the next regular scheduled meeting will be held Monday, November seventeen, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock P M in the Council's chambers. That did not happen.
So, even if it doesn't happen, the actual meeting during the meeting, he said that that meeting would take place during the regular scheduled session, which was Monday, the seventeenth. Even though we're having it today on the Thursday, uh, during that meeting, it was scheduled to happen that Monday, the seventeenth. So the minutes are reflecting the actions that were taken during the meeting, what transpired during that time.
So the minutes, uh, this coming will take, uh, be took place on the twenty.
I said, I said.
It's been moved by Councilman Kenny and seconded by Councilman Kenny. Uh, big questions? All in favor? I?
Alright.
Any opposed to this? I said motion care for the adoption of November third and November the fifth City Council minutes. Uh, moving on, uh, departmental reports. I was informed, so I give you all a quick look at dates on the, uh, departmental reports. I know that Chief Gill, uh, requested, uh, to hire two more officers in her report, uh, comment. She wanted our authorization to, uh, hire two more officers. That's what she have, um, as for a recommendation for the governing body. Uh, also, um, with the water plant, we have an update today. Uh, the new well went in, our electrical panel went out and they'll be, uh, here in the morning to assess our electrical panel. Um, the electrical panel is going to be new with the well, but when we installed it, uh, the electric panel hadn't gotten in yet, but we had an electrical issue today and they will be in, in, in the morning to address that. Uh, they were saying something about, uh, one of the electric fuses, so, uh, might have been out there. And that's with the rehab, so, uh, I want to update you all on that. That's all for the departmental reports I have at this, this present time. Uh, next, you saw that the line of credit, uh, with First City's bank, I would, uh, ask the council to extend the line of credit. The last three months of the year is our toughest months, uh, dealing with the city. Uh, we get most of our revenue at the beginning of the year. Uh, this was, uh, business licenses, franchise fees, below, um, because we had an election this year, uh, that kind of, uh, I guess you would say those off the city budget some because that's money that we have to spend, uh, kind of outside of, of, of what we do on daily operations of the city. So that's why this is needed. Uh, we have never kind of had to do this unless we had an election. Uh, so we actually need to extend our line of credit to make sure that we keep our visas and everything flowing smooth for the city until the first of the year, so our local funds, that makes sense.
And how much was our, um, credit extended? Was there a nail?
Uh, we're, uh, I'm asking the council, it's about a hundred thousand dollars.
I never seen the budget, never seen the financial report, so you got me a limo right now, so.
I understand. Uh, so we haven't approved the budget, so when you all has, got some.
But you ain't approved it, we shouldn't talk about it.
So. The way cities operate is that the previous year's budget flows over into a budget approval. A budget is not really, the majority of budgets are not approved on the date of, because we went through an election season. It was only right that we allowed the new council come in to approve a budget if they're going to be in operations. If the previous council had approved the budget two months before you all got in, then it was gonna maybe a lot of amendments that you wanted to make recommendations to, to the budget. So now you all have the opportunity at the budget work session to add and maneuver the city finances as the new, as, as the new two councils do as well, as well as the old councils, that makes sense. So we approve a budget, then it'll be a whole lot of amendments giving you the opportunity to make your recommendations in this year of budget. Even though we're two months off, the city operates on the previous year's budget until a budget is adopted.
Okay, can we see the previous year?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, can we pull a copy right now and see it?
Just give my financial report. Just give my financial.
I'm sorry.
Okay, give us a copy.
Okay, I'm on that.
Oh, wait, what, when can we do the budget? Because this year is about to go. When, when can we do the budget workflow?
We're gonna have some whole thing for the budget. Of course, it's a lot of finances. You all have to take time to look over.
Well, that's good. That's what we're here, that's, you know, like I said, we're kind of, we didn't have the second orientation, so we're kind of in the, you know, we're just learning and done research, so.
So, so the thing is that I know that, uh, we want everything to be timed. Everybody wants things to be timed. But we're working on the timing because we got other things that arise, like the thing we had a well go down and, uh, we have financial audits that need, we need to get completed for the city for this little reporter for us to get funding in for the city. So all that takes time and kind of pushes things off because that's tedious information that has to be provided. So no one is trying to hold up and not get things done. It's, it's a lot of work that has to be brought in.
I realize that. Okay, I know each department head needs to have a budget and that's what, they don't have one.
So every year, the department head has been asked to put their list together and scan through on the things they need for their departments, alright? His team, uh, has gotten, and I've gotten very few recommendations on what they wanted within their budget, alright? So what we do is we look at the previous year budget and we look at the previous year spending. That's how we adopt and manage the budget based on the, the year, the, the prior year and we project the incoming year. That makes sense?
So you have so much for the water?
Yes, ma'am.
So much for the sewage, so much for the sanitation and, and the, uh.
Yes.
Do you want me to go through my financial?
Yes, go ahead. And, and, and.
No, I mean, I can hold off, yeah. We can hold off if you get ready for that.
Okay, so briefly, uh, we're gonna go through the financial collections for the month of October, which reflected into, and also in November, so I'm gonna pass out what we actually collected for the month of October in the City of Marion. I'll go through the receipts and this is gonna be general fund information for what we received and just take one and pass around. So that is October and I'm gonna first break it down so that you will have an idea of how these things are generally explained each month. On the first page, what you see for October, we collected for, uh, sales, uh, for general property tax, each of particular account is coded out into an account code. This is how we recognize what our spendings are. So this is the accounting principles, general accounting principles, how we break down each account. So in general property taxes for the month of October, and I'm gonna go through November with you as well with what we've received thus far. We collected one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty cents for sales and use tax. It tells you who paid us and what they paid. The amount is there. The code is there, the receipt number, that if there isn't a receipt number, if it's a general, uh, let's say electronically deposited into the city's account where the state gives us money and different entities gives us money, it gives you who gave us that money, who received it. You see my name there, you see Jones from Ms. Jones, Ms. Kenny from Ms. Kenny, or all those different people who tell you who received that actual dollar amount and the date it was put into the system. And you also see the company that paid it in the middle when it says receipt of, receipt for is the sales and use tax and it tells you the dollar amount that we received in our office. So sales and use tax broken down from the county probate judge and all of those different entities, this is yours to take with you. If you flip on the, uh, next page or the back, it tells you that the total amount we received for sales and use tax for that month was one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-three cents. Is everyone following along with me?
Yes.
Okay, so gasoline taxes, we received for that accounting code, uh, two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Cigarette taxes in the City of Marion, we received from those three companies here, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents on those particular days, with those receipts manually and also in the computer. So alcohol beverage taxes, we received four thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Wine taxes, we received from those companies, forty dollars and ninety-nine cents based on the wine rates and all those different things that are already passed. Leasing taxes, we received from those companies listed below, Cintas, Penny Boes, Spartan Nash, you have Porsche sometimes, you have DirecTV, Verizon Wireless, all those companies pay us a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents. So, um, you'll become more familiar with, I know the new, uh, persons, the council, you'll become more familiar with these names and these different companies that are submitting these monies on a monthly basis. Uh, lodging taxes, we received five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents. We still have to get lodging taxes from the, uh, other hotel there, but that is one that remitted to us. For business license coming in, uh, we received a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and, uh, zero cents. Business license time of the year is January, all the way up until about, um, June, uh, but it slows down. January is your book season, you're gonna receive the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars during January. So it's really slow. You're not gonna receive much unless it's a new business opening up or someone starting another business. If they're opening up a new business now, the law provides that they pay half the fee. That's why you see that, that company paid only a hundred and thirty-nine dollars because after July first, they're only required by law to pay half of the business license fee. And, uh, that is their revenue sharing. This is where we share, uh, revenues with the State of Alabama, two thousand forty-six dollars and forty cents. Seven cents gas tax, four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Four cents gas tax, two thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and nineteen cents. Rebuild Alabama gas tax, two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-six, sixty-four cents. Rebuild diesel tax in Alabama, one thousand and one dollar and eighteen cents. And I'm gonna give you the matching records that reflect that as well, so that you'll have that for your records. So this is directly from the State of Alabama, received into our system and that matches the records that you have before you and that is October. Those are the amounts that I just went over with you. So if you see it reflected in where we're getting our information, so you don't assume that we're just pulling it out of the air or somebody gave us this information. The gas tax distribution from diesel from the state, if you look at the sheet that I just went over and go, went over with you on the revenue sharing, if you see two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents, you'll also see diesel sixth and second level distribution, two seventeen twenty-two on that sheet I just gave you. So you see it received in our computer under shared revenue because that is the code that we're sharing revenue with the State of Alabama. You also see that six hundred, if you go down to the following from state inspection fee, six thirty-eight twenty-four is received in our computer under shared revenue. That's broken down for you right there. Seven cents gas, you can see the comparison there at four thousand one sixty-eight twenty-nine. It's also on the state's listed, uh, information sheet as well. So this is a comparison to let you know that we are actually receiving the monies that are coming in per the dollar. We don't care if it's three cents, one cent, or whatever it may be. But that is for the month of October. I'll give you a month of November for, uh, for sewer charges. And our, that is gonna be, uh, your general fund. I'll give you the total momentarily. Sewer charges we received, broken down in the computer, if you were to look at our bank statements. Um, and, uh, if, if, uh, Councilwoman LaCroy was doing and wanted to look at the bank statements and wanted to see what she was looking at per state. Um, and you saw seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents on the bank record. If you're looking at the sewer sheet that I gave you for the receipts that I gave you momentarily. Is everyone following me?
Right.
Okay, so if you're looking at these statements, Councilwoman, I'm using you because you're due to the statement, and you'll be actually signing on to the accounts. And you saw seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. You wanna know where that came from? That, it'll tell you that it came from deposits. So it's received in our computer under seven thirty-five ninety-nine, but we also have a breakdown as to who gave us those monies that particular day, broken down to total up to seven thirty-five ninety-nine. Uh, but you'll see in the records that we deposited that seven thirty-five ninety-nine and so on, on the thirty-first and all those particular days, we deposited nine forty-two twenty-four and we would deposit another one nineteen eleven to get that total amount for the sewer charges. And I'm gonna give you that broken down. So in our system as well, these are the reports that you actually received from me per month. And I actually bought the, uh, total physical year, which we'll break down later for you as well. So these are the allocations of receipts. And also, once we print this out at the end of the month, we have to turn our system over. It also tells us who paid what and what they paid and what their balance on their accounts are. But this is the allocation of receipts that I give to the council to tell you that, uh, our system said we received it in seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents for water, sewer and garbage. When we look on the water side, uh, water is only broken down to forty-two thousand, three eighty-six seventy-six. And I know this is a lot of information, but this is what you usually receive from, uh, us per month, okay? So it tells you water. You'll find out that this is nothing compared to a forty thousand dollar water bill from Alabama Power. So it tells you you're behind in the actual revenue collections for what we actually receive. We don't receive what we actually spend out most of the time. So, but this is broken down. At the top, you see water, sewer, garbage, lake connection fees and all those different adjustments at the top. The bottom tells you how much we actually received in those particular accounts. Okay, so give or take, if someone brings us a check, let's say the check is insufficient funds or not a good check, or we received it later than the date that we have to in the computer. This tells you that we took in seventy-two thousand dollars, but when we go back to the bank record, it tells you that we actually, once we got through with everything at the end of the month, we deposited about seventy-four thousand dollars. Okay, so, and I'm breaking that down to you on this particular sheet here now. Okay, are there any questions so far before I continue? Okay, so on the sewer side, I'm going back to that. This is the allocation of receipts for the water department for monthly. Okay, so you can put that to the side there. On the sewer side, it says that we collected fourteen thousand, two sixty-nine seventy-seven. So when people receive their bills, they see that they have a water bill, sewer bill and a garbage bill, okay? And that tells you in that collection, out of those totals, it was fourteen thousand, two sixty-nine seventy-seven that we received for sewer. Okay, fines and forfeitures, uh, we're working on the court part of it, but we also share revenue, uh, and I'm gonna come back to the water because it's gonna be broken down with more, but right here in the receipt chart, one twenty-five fifty-three, we share that with the Perry County, uh, Circuit Clerk's Office. Let's say someone is arrested on a, uh, in district court or circuit court, then they owe us some fees that they remit over here to our office. Miscellaneous revenue, uh, that came in at seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. We're waiting on, um, we just finished some reports with the Alabama Atomic Big Beef, we're at Eldery Center. We got those submitted, um, and they're gonna send us about twenty thousand dollars, so we're waiting to receive that in our office as well, but we did get those reports done. So that's some of the things that push us back. Councilwoman, uh, LaCroy, that you were asking about budget information and Councilman, uh, Kenny. So those are the things when we have to get those reports to make sure our monies actually continue to flow into the office. It may push us back from discussing some other things with you because we're trying to make sure we can maintain the revenue that we have coming in. So, uh, but we did finish that report. Uh, water and sewer, the interest earned, go back one second, was a dollar and sixteen cents in the general fund account. Uh, water and sewer, these were the water fees. So in our water fee, we saw forty-two thousand collected on the allocation of receipts. But once we actually make sure the checks are good or people come back and they pick up their insufficient fund checks or something like that, or the check that wasn't any good, we, uh, total up forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents on the receipt chart. That is broken down. That's how you're seeing on our bank statement, per the dollar amount, okay? Uh, checks, we don't accept cash, money order to check, or, uh, we also have online payments as well, so they can pay in all of those different forms or drop in the drop box. And, um, online payments are received through Next Fuel Pay. Garbage, uh, charges, uh, broken down to us right here in the fees there for the garbage, we actually collected fifteen thousand, seven sixty-nine thirty-five. The total of charges there that we have is gonna be a total of about seventy-four thousand once you add those particular amounts. So our grand total of the monies that you see on the back, you see a grand total of the revenue that we received in our office for that month of October, two fourteen, four oh two, forty-one. Okay, and then, um, so judging some, if you want to know where we are so far in November, take one and two of these pages. And we're still receiving November's monies as they come in because we're still in the month of November. So far, sending two pages. These are a bit slow and people are admitting there, um, you probably received notice if you're a property owner that you have to pay property taxes in the month of, uh, October and somewhat. January, we see a bulk of those particular revenues. It's two pages, so you should have one of two and two of two. One of two and two of two. So with the exception of the water receipts that are not there and we are give or take about maybe forty, fifty some thousand in water collections, but that is not received on here just yet, but we will get those in the computer. So far, general property taxes, we've only received for the month of November, twenty-nine dollars. Okay, uh, sales and use taxes, we have received thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars and five cents, broken down to who paid what and how much they paid. Okay, gasoline taxes from that particular company, one thousand five eighty-two and four cents. Cigarette taxes from those various companies there, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Leasing taxes, two thirty-three forty-four. Lodging taxes, five twenty-seven thirty-six. Business licenses, our office is in the process, uh, in the month of October, what we do from October to November. In order to receive all of our money in January, we have to send out notices, which are renewal notices to all these companies. We have to put them in the correct category so they will pay, pay us the correct amount of money. States are, um, keen about, let's say Alabama Power, we can't discharge them what we wanna charge them. Uh, we have to charge them the fee that the state says we have to charge them, which is like a one or three percent fee. Uh, so, uh, those amounts are based on those particular things, but we have to send out these notices so that we can get the right amount of money, uh, collected into the city, uh, per year because we don't wanna mess our revenue up come January by sending someone a business license that should be in one category and we sent them, let's say, for example, if Calla City Drugs is gonna pay us about six thousand dollars for a business license. I don't wanna send them a business license that says they only paid two hundred and seventy-four dollars. They will be happy, but I will be sad. So, um, we have to make sure we're putting these businesses in the right category. So those are another things that are pushing us back from, you know, maybe calling you every day and doing those things. We're doing the operations of the cities to make sure we have the monies to function. Okay, um, also, and we send those out October and November to make sure they have received them by January.
Put you that right on how many businesses we have operating.
Last year, we collected about two hundred and eighty-four business licenses. You do not see two hundred and eighty-four businesses in the city, so we're sending them to New Jersey, New York, to Maryland, to, to California. If, I always give the example of Sarah Lee sells her peaches in the stores and Sarah Lee's head company has to get a business license from the City of Marion. So whoever is doing business in the City of Marion where they have a local nexus is what we call it. Uh, if they don't have a local nexus, which is the actual business front, they still have to purchase a, a business license. The state doesn't just allow us to charge what we want when it comes to delivery license. So when you see trucks coming through and they're delivering stuff into the city, they have to pay a flat fee of a hundred dollars or if their gross is at a bait, they, at base rate, they pay that ten dollar issuance fee that is cut off by the state, but we have a twelve dollar issuance fee. So all those things are regulated and we wanna make sure we're putting companies in the right category because we can't discharge anything because business, business owners have business rights as well. Are there any questions so far? Okay, um, so gasoline taxes, we're still getting those and, uh, cigarette taxes, um, six twenty-eight sixty-six, leasing taxes, two thirty-three forty-four, lodging, five twenty-seven thirty-six, and we're still receiving the water and all those different things. We are in the process of, we will be cutting people off. Uh, sorry if you don't have your turkey ready in the oven, but the City of Marion has to operate. So by next week, we're gonna start doing cutoffs because we have to get revenue to make sure people are fussing about clean water and all these different things, but guess what? The city has to buy chemicals, the city has to pay operators, the city has to pay power bills and all these different things. And you have some people that are very far behind and we're gonna do some cutoffs, uh, starting next week, uh, so that we can start getting the revenue that we're supposed to rightfully have in the city. It's not right. It just tends to have to pay a, a water bill and so does everyone else in the community. So that's just on fear and that's the cost of doing business. So, um, that is one of those different things that we're gonna be honing in on because this is a tight season for us, but this is the revenue that we have thus far. And, uh, you do this in comparison and you look at, I sent you some bills that on, uh, in your packages and I know you had them yesterday. I'm gonna go through those bills, what they look like each month. And some of them you do not have in front of you, but some of them, uh, are on that listing. So while we're finishing off revenue, are there any questions for me in terms of what you're looking at, how you're looking at it and how is the city operating? Those are the taxes that we're getting each month. It's gonna be cigarette, wine, beer, alcohol beverages, so leasing, lodging, um, miscellaneous revenue from the Eldery Center. Um, all those different things are how we actually get our money so that we can pay the employees, we can pay the power bills, we can pay all these different things. And we have a lot of different things coming up on the table that we have to pay for and get done. And, um, revenue is really tight and that's why, uh, Mayor is seeking that line of credit because just like Councilwoman, uh, you're adding to the accounts. And the mayor and myself, I actually made a joke with the mayor that I wanna come off in a minute because if we don't get these bills paid, I, you know, you get a tax levy. The state say they will take your home from you and you can add some of the former mayor and people of that nature because you're signing on the count. They can take mine, they can take the mayor. So we're not trying to do anything to risk those different things that we've worked for in life. Uh, we have jobs to do and we have obligations that we have to meet. Uh, right now, we have to pay about ninety thousand dollars in some IRS taxes and some other different things. So this is nothing that we're playing around with. This is business and we have to get the revenue in to make sure we're doing the cost of business and, uh, making sure we're successful as a city. Are there any questions about revenue and before I go with the buildings?
You mentioned cutting off water. Have we, have you had to cut off any?
We have in the past and people come and pay their bills and they have to do their, uh, different things. Um, so, yeah, we have, yes, ma'am, we have had to do that in the past and people pay or they make a payment arrangement. What the council did for you guys is allow them a two-month window. Um, so that if you, um, have up to two months, then, uh, if you're outside going into your third month, then you're on that list to be scheduled to be cut off. And that's just like Alabama Power, anyone else. They don't let you go over these excessive months or whatever else where they cut off that particular, uh, service to you. Any other questions? So you receive the buildings in your packages. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll go through those with you at this time. Uh, if you're looking there at the, uh, it says check registry. So we cannot get a check out of our system without putting this information into the system. You don't just miraculously get a check and say that you're paying someone. If it, if a check has been created in our system, there's a trail. If the, if the check has been created in our system, there's a trail. It's gonna be timestamped, it's gonna write in the background, and you can't take it out. That's gonna be the administrative side on the accounting software, those things that keep us honest and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to. So checks that went into the system on our AP side, your ADT security services, you have cameras in the police department, cameras down at the city shop. At the depot, and some other different places, and at the water site. So ADT security, that bill is four eighty-nine fifty-four. And I'm going through these different things with you, so that you can understand what it is. The Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, that's gonna be ALEA, the system that they use to run people in the system, and all those various different things. Alabama Power, so far, we only put twenty-nine thousand, seven thirty-two into the system, seventy-six. And those are the bills that we can pay until we get everything else lined up. We have a Perkins' well, that we have about thirty-three thousand dollars that we have to pay on the Perkins' well. You don't want any of these power things to be cut off on these wells. If the power's cut off, then that means people won't get more access to their homes. So we have to make sure we're paying these bills and making sure we're managing these things to see what is a priority, and what can kind of wait till we get revenue. Because not everyone is paying their bills at the same time. Mayor may pay his bills differently than Councilman Willie Jackson, I may pay mine differently than Councilman Tommy Kenny, Tim Kenny. But everybody's paying differently, so we don't receive all the revenue at one time. Going here, Alabama Tom Big B, those are different services, just like I told you, you have attorneys and different things on the Alabama League of Municipality side. Alabama Tom Big B, we have the garbage truck that we have, where we pay the bill there. We, they funded us a garbage truck, and we pay a monthly bill to them, and those are some of the rates that are there. American Osmond, those different supplies that we receive, so that you have all those different things. So it's gonna be supplies from your tissues, your cleaning supplies, so all of your different things there. And some of these bills may be a bill that may be from the previous month, that may be gathered up a little bit more than just one month. Your Arrowhead Environment Partners, that's where the garbage truck goes to the landfill to tip the trucks down there, and that is the fee that is there, you'll see that there. AT&T, self-explanatory, the phone lines in all of the departments, water, sewer, court, whether it's fire, wherever it is, those are the different things there. And Gray Bar should be there also, because they're our phone management system. Blackfield Hardware, this is where your employees from your street, your water, your different departments are getting parts, they're getting tools, they're getting strues, branches, whatever they're getting to make sure they can do the job that they're doing to run the service of people. That's there. This is already the catch and carry, that's from Halloween, that's already kinda gone through that there, so that is one. What you see there is that we still have to put a check in the system. I don't care if they go and decide they're gonna swipe the card and call Councilwoman, I'm losing your name, LaCroy earlier, about Christmas lights. And we're talking about using the card, and I replied to her, even if we use the card, we still have to put a check into the system, and the lights were about four hundred dollars. So regardless of what we do, we still want our records to reflect a check going into the system, and that's a check going into the system for that, different things that they receive. Coward Financial is the backhoe, the tractor that they're running that we're leasing there, is electronically coming out of our account. The Chatsworth San Andreas is only the retainer fee, that is not the cost of them actually coming to the service here, the cost of them doing cases, or any of those things, that's only a retainer fee. The city of Marion payroll, that's just one thing that's gone there, they, all the payrolls haven't gone there. Our payroll runs at least from anywhere from forty-five to, on the net side, to sixty thousand dollars by weekly, that is payroll. And you want to always produce the gross side, because your gross is gonna be your child support, your garnishments, everything that are coming out of your checks, and it is gonna be your taxes. If you only produce the net, you're gonna run into a problem to have a levy on taxes and all these other different things that are coming out of the check. So you look at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, that's gonna be our payroll side, okay? And we still have to get all those things into the system, because over generally transfer corporate supply, that's gonna be all of your ink and your printers, and all of your different things that are going through, and that's more than one month. Dallas Heating and Air, the air conditioner unit went out, and they come down to service those particular things, whether it be here or at the nutrition site, or wherever they're checking, that's what that is there. And they went to get some supplies from the dollar store that has to go into the system there, that's what those two markings are. Election Systems and Software, the runoff election for supplies only, for runoff election costs us, for two people, five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. So you can only imagine what it costs us for when everybody was running. But that was for the runoff, and that was supplies only, that's not to pay people, to get the other systems and all those. We look at about fifty to sixty-seven thousand dollars, and you all only pay fifty dollars each month. So the taxpayers eat up the rest of the cost of sixty thousand dollars to go from that particular point, okay? And that's why we're having to find more monies. First, Mr. McLeanly put out some flags and some things, where he bought some supplies, and he got reimbursed. He bought the receipt to us to get reimbursed for what he had to get supplies for. First, insurance funding, that is gonna be our workers' comp, so that you're familiar with them, we pay them for workers' comp in case someone gets hurt on the job, yes sir. Well, I can't send it to the council votes on the bills. When the council votes on the bills tonight, that's when Mr. McLeanly will get his money. And that just certifies that we don't just send out checks to, that you guys haven't voted on, okay? Goals, in go states or police, whether it be bullets, whether it is uniforms or whatever that is, that's there. Pell County Commission is gonna be the jail that we have the prisoners or detainees or inmates at. And the HCC inmate meals are the meals that they're eating, so those are things there. ISPF, Insurance of the South, this is gonna cover our buildings, our insurance, our cars, everything to that nature. Are you guys following me, do I need to continue to go through this line by line?
I have some questions.
Okay, okay. We send a shelter, Ms. Shelton paid a fee to the court that she didn't need to have those funds in for that, so we're reverting that fee back to her. So that we can put the money order that they gave us into the treasury and then give her back the fifty dollars that she paid. Marion Community Bank, there's a water well on one side, and then there's a water well that was dug at Grady years before I even came here. There is a well that was dug, so there's a loan taken out, and a portion of that loan comes from general fund, another portion comes from the water sewer account. So that's why you're gonna see one thousand, zero and eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-nine cents twice. You're splitting that three thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollar payment up from general fund and water. Okay, Marion Fire, so the volunteer fire department does fire runs, and they also, that's gonna be a monthly allocation to them that they have. We stopped doing the forty-five, I think maybe five thousand dollars at the end of the year, and we pay them a working out fee of three seventy each month. And then they have fire runs, whenever they're called out to a fire, they have ten dollars for a run, and all the volunteers get the ten dollars. Whoever is going out to those runs, and they submit a request for payment to our office, and that's what that is. The Marion Food Value, that may be some things that Gene and his crew got when they were doing the Gatorade Award during the hot seasons that we're already trying to get clear. Marion Library, so we pay for, in the Marion Clinic, a veterinarian clinic, that's gonna be animal housing and things. So if a dog or cat or something needs shelter that someone has called us for, then Dr. Halbrook does the housing down at the clinic down there, and we pay that fee of monthly. The Marion Perry County Library, we pay a monthly allocation to them, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The police cars, to have the windows done in those two cars that we got before your tenure, when you guys came here, that's the tent thing that's there, yes? So that's the one that I said that she paid the fee to us. She paid a fee that she didn't need the bill bond, so. It was, it's a, you pay a transmit fee and you pay a bonding fee. So Ms. Shelton came to our office beforehand, without giving too much information, and she didn't need to have a bill bonds agency. So if you don't have a bill spokesman, and the chief of police and our office decided to let her do the signature and recopense. And so we're giving her the fifty dollars back for the bill spokesman fee, because she didn't have to pay it, because we said that she can do out on a signature bond, rather than having to do the bill spokesman fee. So we're giving her her fifty-dollar money order back. We're giving her, this is just the money she paid us that we're reimbursing her back. The, the court sets the bond, and it's based on the crime that was committed, the, the police chief is right there. So based on the crime that is committed, the court magistrate and all that sets the bonds, and the police department, the chief of police can set the bonds, but the law allows that. Yes, you do.
Oh, I do?
Yes, you do. I have a certified magistrate.
How do you get to be magistrate?
Before your time, and we didn't have one. You can ask your mayor that question, or a council, a council, Kenny, are you aware that I'm certified as a magistrate? And others, I mean, I don't know where you were, but. You can ask the Alabama League of Municipality, I don't want that, Councilwoman, there is no one that has gotten that job.
So when it came to the magistrate, when our magistrate left, we're open, so we don't have anybody certified. So we have to make sure that we have a backup plan, so that people leave, we have people that certify and still operate. So a magistrate, so I'm like, you know, operate a private magistrate, and we had no one certified to even run the court. To make sure that we secure the city, we have to make sure that we have redundancy for the city of Marion. So we gotta have somebody that's on staff that's certified, so next time someone leaves, we have someone that can operate.
What was that?
He's been on, he's been on Zoom.
The judge is on Zoom at all times. Judge Patrick Erickson has been getting paid.
When, how did you get certified? Did you go to class for it? I don't know.
The Alabama Court Administrative Office, of course, had to certify anyone that's a magistrate. You have to take the courses according to the state of Alabama.
She took the courses?
Yes.
When did you take the courses?
I took courses back in February.
Online?
No, I had to go to Montgomery.
On what city time or your time?
Well, if it's work for the city, it's on the city time. So it's five courses and a six course.
But the council has to approve to pay for the classes.
It's an appointee position, so one, someone has to be certified. What I'm trying to dig out is, is what is the, what is the problem with retaliation or have redundancy? But you got a toilet in there running too, you, she wanna be the man's man too?
No, I do not.
She gonna be the man's man, the, the, the treasurer, she got too many tiles. So, so we only did that for redundancy, meaning that when someone leaves, we have someone that's available to say, hey, listen, the city can still operate. So for a time period, we didn't have, we didn't have no one certified. So to, to actually support the umbrella of the city and our kindness of the city, this is no additional money. No one approved any additional money to say that, that position is paying another twenty or thirty thousand dollars. That money is put back into the budget to support the city, instead of having the city operate the court.
Since October last year.
So we wouldn't have that issue, our courts is still operating.
And our judges have never left our, our ticket of repaying him every month.
He's still doing his job.
No, he's not.
He's not doing his job. I talked with him, like, oh, this is a month ago, I hear.
So, I'm gonna say this. So we had a clerk, our courts was bringing in eight hundred, three thousand dollars a month. The most I've ever seen our courts bring in was, was three thousand, I think, maybe I think five thousand at one, at one time, because we put it in an interceptor system. So when people don't pay their fees, that the state can pull the money from their income tax. You understand where I'm coming from? It's, it's, it's no financial.
We talked about that at the meeting near about the.
It's no additional financial cost to the city. The magistrate position was costing us thirty-six thousand dollars. Councilman Jackson, I'm trying to explain it to you. Our, our magistrate position was costing us thirty-six thousand dollars a year, okay? The largest he ever brought in was three thousand dollars, and the lowest we would bring in less than that. So when you have someone that's certified to bring redundancy, it reduces the cost, it's costing the city, so we can have additional money to operate. It's going into the courts, it's, 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 it's running the city. The money has to be divided up.
Right here, she says she wasn't making that kind of money. Here she is, she can figure out herself.
I, I, I'm asking, do we have another fund, a bank account for that?
There are, there are separate funds for, remember when we, remember at the last meeting, we asked to take this miller off the accounts and all of that? We, we just talked about that at two weeks ago at the meeting, do you, do you not remember that? We bought that up, and that was to take her, remove her off, we asked to add the fire key to the other accounts. Do you remember when we talked about adding YouTube accounts and all of that? Do you, do you remember we mentioning that?
Yeah, I remember, I was at a meeting, I, I wasn't Councilwoman yet, but.
No, we did this at the organizational meeting. Right. And then, and then during the organizational meeting, two weeks ago, we bought it up again during the organizational meeting, all these things are recorded on this computer.
Was it, was the job open, or was it posted?
Because the council said they were going back.
Did you advertise? We went part-time with the. But why you didn't take the job? You worked part-time, she worked full-time, it's three jobs. You worked part-time, one job. Let me, let me help you out. Yes, sir. It is an oversight, we didn't have to finance it solely because we were going to get some money on her magistrate, I mean, her magistrate certification. But we didn't have the money, because it was a full-time position. So with those, if it's someone inside. Excuse me, ma'am, I would, I would graciously ask you to leave, you can respect this, this is counsel. So to reduce costs, knowing that the courts were costing more money than it was bringing in, we got someone certified, and we allowed the office to operate and run your courts upon the same certification. So it's segment and do this, it's just not one person that's doing it. So it became a part-time position to save the city. Well, that was a smart move, but look like the main, the next smart move was to advertise the job, post the job.
And that's where it goes.
So, so the previous magistrate, the previous magistrate was, we're not paying enough, all right? We're not paying enough, because it can be a full-time job. It's, it's not enough, it's only twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, it requires a lot. So what we did, we consolidated it, save more money to save, to do this, not in additional costs.
How much she making, how much she make in all?
Okay, so this money goes into the municipal court.
Yes, there's, there's a municipal court account, and those fees are split, there are several different agencies that the court has to pay for. But we haven't done any depository things or anything to those particular account. We haven't done anything since the magistrate actually left those, because we're, we're organizing the office and trying to get those things together. And we have the tickets, all those different things, all those layouts and things, and trying to get that office up and running. I was just talking to the chief of police about that, and trying to get someone here, she can tell you that we just mentioned advertising that and trying to get someone here. It's nothing that we just want to take on, no one was in the position. So that, what do you leave your court, and you leave criminals committing crimes and not being prosecuted, or not having anyone to speak up for? Or if they get arrested, who talks about the bond, who talks about these different things, or who does that if no one is there to do it? It's nothing that Mrs. Hinton just wanted to take on, it's, it's the passion for the city that Mrs. Hinton took it on. And we talked about it, and at council, I mean, I don't know where Councilman Jackson was, but we talked about making a part-time position. So, I mean.
Don't, don't you take minutes, I, I'm doing it again.
We do, we do. I mean, if you guys wanted this, this information brought to you, I would have gladly printed this out for you. I, I would have gladly printed it out if, if it prepared.
So we're, we're, we're documenting minutes every single month, you see what I'm saying? So they can be requested, but it's not likely something that you can pull out of the sky. Let, let's move on, we, we didn't have this. You're welcome to call me and we can discuss it. Any other questions, council?
Not on that matter, so just, that's.
Are there any other questions about the bills that you guys have regarding the bills? We only have, the council voted for the general fund account card and that's the own, we don't have credit cards at all. There's a debit card for the general fund and the council voted for that when they were traveling to meetings and things of that nature and all of that. But we don't have a credit card at all.
Now, I'm, I'm understanding that all this is for Marion Banking, Marion Bank.
It's, this is gonna be West Alabama Bank and Marion Banking Trust.
Okay, I only see M P B, is that not Marion?
That's gonna be Marion Bank and the other one is gonna be, it's gonna be for West Alabama, it's just coded in the system like that. Uh, when we, years and years ago, when the accounts were shut down, the whole long story with I R S and different stuff, we had to open up. Separate uh, West Alabama account. And so that's, this is, is still coded in the system like that, but it's West Alabama, it's our general fund account.
Okay. These, these are, these are the check numbers.
Yes, ma'am, the check numbers are on there, the vendor numbers, the vendors who we pay, the date we paid them, the bank account, the amount. And um, they're all still listed as outstanding because you haven't voted on anything.
So I assume if we approve this, that these checks will go in the mail tomorrow?
No, they're, they would go um in the mail once the funding are, they are there, when people pay their bills, when people do all those different things, that's when checks are, are mailed out and based on priority.
So if you look back at it, uh.
So the checks are made out, that they will be mailed to the town?
It, it depends, you, I mean, you don't send out a check uh if you don't have the monies there. So um, what actually takes priority is gonna be your employees being paid, uh Blue Cross and Bluefield would take priority. What takes priority is your Alabama Power bills, your first insurance, that has already gone out. Because that is gonna be an automatic draw, uh draft from the account, the first insurance, which is the workers' comp, so we want them always covered. Uh, a priority that went out already is gonna be the insurance of, of the south. That is gonna go out because we don't want police officers and people driving cars and have accidents and we're not covered. But most of, we're gonna do priority based on what comes into the treasury.
If you look at what was collected, it was two fourteen, four oh two, and our bills is two sixty-six.
I, I, just one quick question, who all has a, a cell phone that the city pays for?
Um, it's just various departments and some of the officers, um, and uh department heads. And uh, Gene and some of his drivers, because they're driving trucks and communicating back and forth. And water operators and uh myself and um, uh, maybe court or something like that has happened, I don't think we're doing the court one.
I'm aware that Gene doesn't have one.
Gene's phone is, he has a phone that's being paid for, he, something's wrong with his phone that we have to file an insurance claim on and get him a new phone.
Okay, so he uses it.
Until we just get his other phone. Once you guys vote to say that he can get a phone out of the treasury, unless you just want me to start pulling phones out of the treasury and doing whatever else, then that's fine with me. But you guys are asking these questions and we haven't voted on or said that you want to do any of these different things, but.
I'm just curious, you know, I know I'm asking questions that I shouldn't be asking right now, you can tell me that, but I'm just curious.
Well, you, you, you can ask the questions, I'm just explaining how it actually goes.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh ninety thousand going to Alabama Power. Was it one month, two months, three months or what?
You saw it ninety thousand?
Yeah, ninety thousand.
On here?
Going, going to Alabama Power? Was it three months behind or?
You saw the twenty-nine thousand?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, ninety thousand on that stack of a page.
So, that's gonna be your water, you may have a month or so in there, but you have to look. Your Perkins will, one will, you have an M M I will that runs about fifteen thousand dollars a month. You have another will that may be running another ten thousand dollars a month. You have a lift stations and all, you have about six or seven lift stations, you have more if they're operating. But they're all running, in all, we're spending on the water side, maybe anywhere from forty to forty-five thousand dollars a month on water. So some of this probably will be some doubling up, but yes, um, it's, your bills are gonna run that much a month for Alabama Power.
Let me say this, council, uh, and um, and we're not at all trying to be disrespectful. But you all allow them to speak freely, but doing city council means, means we're here to do business, but we're new. So we're trying to explain it the best way possible at the time, right? And, and this is not, it, you know, we try to consolidate it so it can be a fresh quiz, so everybody can kind of understand. But if you see all the documents you got, all this stuff actually takes tedious time to get done. Because when you do our financial audit, we want the audits as how we get funding. So of course, everything for the city has to be received in appropriate manner for us to get our financial reports. You can, you can call it X in a city, we're doing well with our financial reports. Most cities can't even get to do financial reports because of the day-to-day operation of the finances itself. That's why you say, well, this city said they're ten years behind, they, they're still ten years behind, they haven't had a financial audit in six, seven years. It's because this right here takes the majority of the time, look, if you're not filing it appropriately, doing it appropriately. You don't have really nothing you can provide to your, your uh auditors to get your financial reports. So all this document you see, it actually, y'all would have to take time to go home and, and scale through this stuff to get a, understand. Because these bills will be repetitive, a lot of, some of them are loans, some of this stuff is all here, was here before I even got here, we, we paying off of. It was a, almost a million dollar loan before I was still in high school. But guess what, we still have to pay for it because it was approved by the city. So we have indebtedness that rolls over that we have to pay for. So when I say extend the line of credit, that means that all our monies are not received at the same time. So that's just like you uh having an overdraft at your account. We extend it so we don't have overdraft problems, so when our monies come in, we can substitute that. Because all our monies not come in like a, uh, federal dollars. If you have a, a federal grant, you know, you're getting federal dollars and state dollars, you know exactly what they're gonna be, exactly what time they're gonna hit every single month. But because we are a business, some, some months are good, some months are bad, some months are tedious. And then you pay off emergency expenses, some things happen, you know, that you have to pay for. So you have to look that that's gonna take away from your operating expense for that month, that's something you gotta catch up with later on in the month. Like I was saying, it took us fifty-some thousand dollars to run an election, you'll say, well, that should be right, well. What we do, lay off half of the city and while we run an election and hire the half back? It doesn't work like this, so we have to mo- monetize our monies and, and, and balance things out. Until our boatload come in and then it, it, it levels itself out at the end of the year. Every month you see this, it's not gonna be a balance statement, that's almost impossible. There's no city that's gonna run a balance statement every month unless, you know, they Vegas or something and got all this, this people gambling and, and. Taking all these cash dollars, and, and you know, we are a small community, so we have to manage our money in the best way we can. Now, you'll say, well, we are behind, that's why I've been discussing prior to you all coming in. About raising our water rates and sewer rates, we have the lowest water rate, sewer rate and garbage rates in the state of Alabama. We haven't raised the water, sewer, garbage rates since two thousand and eight, that's seventeen years, but guess what? Alabama Power rate done went up, our insurance rate done went up, our gas costs have done went up, so we cannot operate. Based on, we're not uh mediating, well, we're not sustaining the city sources. As other entities are doing the same thing. So at some point, we have to come to the board and say, hey, listen, our will is running us uh twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a month. We have to go up substantially on our water to substitute that. And that costs rolls over the citizens, all of us are, our citizens know what we pay as far as taxes to the government. The same thing, operation just right here in the city of Marion, that's how we operate. So if you see something that's falling behind, it's not that, that someone is saying, okay, we're throwing this money away, we're throwing that money away. No, we have to make sure that we bring it up, we're, we're trying to mediate what we have is what I'm saying. And to balance it out, we have to increase garbage rates, we have to increase sewer rate, we have to increase water rate. That money is not gonna be used for nothing but the water, sewer and garbage.
I, I, you said you don't wanna disrespect, I definitely don't wanna disrespect you. I thank highly of you, but ain't nowhere in hell you're raising water rates and you pumping mud and people.
Let me say, let me say this, so, so, so. That is why, that is why we're submitting financial reports to give federal dollars and to substitute that cost. So the citizen won't have to pay it.
Ma'am, ma'am, you cannot run a city off of, off, off, off of grants. You got to run the city off of somebody's own money.
Right, that's right.
You can't, you, you, why was, like a fool's stand?
Say this, so the own money is the, is the, is the people that do business. It's the citizen doing business with the city, that's the own money, that's our own money.
I can't ask you to, I, now, you can't ask nobody to give them more money for water, come on, man. Sewers is running down the streets. We, we can't ask the people.
Let, let me say this, that didn't happen overnight.
No, it didn't. But you've been here nine years. So don't throw that back in the bag like you throwing it on yourself.
So let me say this, all right, so we're gonna, I'm gonna say this, so we through.
Yes, sir.
When I stepped in the office, we had ninety thousand dollars bills, thirty thousand dollars in the account. And we have half a million dollar loan that the bank with no money to pay. So stuff had to be prioritized to address the indebtedness at that point. Okay, so, so if, if we have pot of gold, our money that was just gonna flow in to alleviate all of this. It'll be, I, I will be very happy for that to happen. But guess what, because we're in a situation with any, we have to apply for federal and state dollars. To address the million dollar needs our water sewer system had, they don't have a hundred thousand, ten thousand dollar need, they have a million dollar needs. Million dollar needs.
Way back in the back, I was back then, you didn't tell the truth, did you?
Thank you.
What, what are you talking about?
When you were talking about, be, you know, bill, those bills are way back then and y'all be paying for them up here, that's a stone, them bills was not back then.
Mr. Crutt, you are on the council, please go to Marion Bank and you can pull all the loans.
I'm not on there.
You get on there, you can pull them and show it, Councilman Jackson, and show him that a will was dug in two thousand, it cost the city a million dollars.
Well, that's what you're referring to.
The bank has told me that all councilmen can be on the card to see the captains. So, I mean, I would advise all of us to be on there, just getting in there.
So let's, let's, let's move on. I am an open line of communication, but city council is here to give the leaders. If you have any questions, you can call me, I will be here, I will sit in the office and, and show it to you and go over. And explain it the best way I can until you want me to bring in someone else to explain it to you in a different term.
If, if, if uh, if we were to get our agenda and everything on time, we could, we could, we could stay in our cell. And bring it, bring it, bring it, bring it back to you, but we ain't getting our agenda.
So the law requires that you get it twenty-four hours beforehand and. You, you. Y'all need to join this shit. Here's one, here's one of the things I would like to say, that is one thing.
Can I ask one more thing? Uh, cue stop and shop, what are we paying in oil? How come we're not doing it at fruition, are we paying at full price for the gas?
Yes, ma'am, we have to do a settlement to the big cars, we have to pay call.